I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 Papillion City Council Meeting to Order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Cluke, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
A current copy of the Open Meeting Act? Current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. The Mayor's Youth Leadership Council will be hosting a Hispanic Heritage Month event on Sunday, October 8th, at 1:00 PM at the First Street Plaza. And there'll be food, a mariachi band and dancers, guest speakers, and more exciting events. So if you get a chance to come check that out. The annual naturalization ceremony was held on September 17th in front of the Portal School. Thank you to the Papillion Area Historical Society for hosting the event, and congratulations to all the new U.S. citizens. Sump Library had a great turnout for the Papillion Book Fest on September 16th. Thank you to the library and the Parks employees for making that a great community event. And then just a couple of quick reminders. The Papillians Butterfly Gardens Garden Party will be on September 24th, and that's from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And members of the public are invited to attend and help join in their celebration. And the 55-plus Club's 8th Annual Fall Festival fundraiser is on October 7th, and that's from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this is their biggest fundraiser of the year, so if you get a chance to help support them, that would be great. And then just a quick FYI, Mark and I will both be out of town next week for the League of Nebraska Municipalities, and that's Wednesday to Friday, and then Friday to the following Wednesday, so we'll be out of town a whole week. We will be in Austin, Texas for ICMA's annual conference, so these are the trainings we have to attend for accreditation that we have. So we will still both be available by email and phone call. We just won't be in the office during that week. So, right? Cry for me, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second by Councilman Cluke. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please
vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 2005, an ordinance to amend Section 205-262 maximum permitted sign area of Article 37 Signs of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with the maximum permitted sign area in the CBD, the Central Business District. The applicant's the City of Papillion. It's the CBD's district sign budget. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Cluke. D2, Ordinance 2009, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to annexation. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Sunday. Thank you. D3, Ordinance 2010, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as Tax Lot 3A 1B1 and Tax Lot 3A 1B2, located in Section 2 Township 13 North Range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of South 156th Street and Capeart Road. The applicant is Prairie Tower Business Park LLC, R&amp;R Commerce Park South 2. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. D4, Ordinance 2011, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from LI Limited Industrial to LI PUD2 Limited Industrial with a specific planned unit over development overlay for the property legally described as Lots 1 and 2 Commerce Business Center Replat 8, generally located 15350 Shepherd Street. The applicant's 88 Tactical. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Gaines. D5, Ordinance 2012, an ordinance to authorize the operation of golf carts on city streets, submitted by Councilmember Tom Mumgarth. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Fanslow. E1, Ordinance 2008, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code 150-3 and to repeal 166-2 and 166-11 to clearly address permitted obstructions within the right-of-way. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. F1, Resolution R2301. I thought somebody was going to say something. I'm sorry. F1, Resolution R230136, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to update the growth management plan, implementing policies and procedures as adopted and approved by the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency. The applicant's the City of Papillion. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R230136?
I'll.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Fanslow. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R230142, a resolution to approve an amendment to the master fee schedule pertaining to capital facilities charges, water hydrants, liquor license, publication fees, and various recreation use fees. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R230142?
No.
Motion by Councilman Sunday?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R230151. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve setting to 2023-2024 property tax request. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. So we have a motion to approve Resolution R230151?
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. Next is Ordinance, F4, Ordinance 2004, an ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 2004?
No.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. We only do this once a year, so a little bit for the public if they're watching. We usually have a series of amendments. What we do is we've got the original motion for the budget, and then there is a routine one that's been done since about 1998 for a 1% increase to the Restricted Funds Authority. And then that's a supermajority. Then if there are any council amendments to specific items or line items, we take those next. And then once all those amendments are done, then we have the final vote on the budget. So we have a motion on the floor for the budget. I will ask if there is a motion. Let me think about this. One A. So yeah, so there was a staff amendment in there, and so is there a motion to approve an amendment proposed by staff, and that was outlined on page 27 and 28 of the packet you'd received? Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Ms. Cluke.
Sorry, no, I was...
Oh, no, that's, oh, okay. Any other discussion? If not, please vote on the motion on the staff amendment. Mr. Ingberg, there you go.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. The next one is the motion to approve the 1% increase to the LID, Restricted Levy Authority, not the Levy Authority, the Restricted Funds Authority. This is one a lot of times people think that we might be increasing the actual tax request. It's the one that actually works on the Restricted Funds Authority, and the Restricted Funds are the things like interlocal agreements, capital projects that are carried over, projects like that. It's not increasing levy. And in this case, we're not actually, it's, we're increasing the authority, not the expenditure, so we're not even actually using the authority. It's just allowing us in the budget to have the maximum authority if and when we'd ever need it. That's the one that's been done every year routinely. I don't think we've ever actually used it, but it's an emergency. And it does require a supermajority if that passes. So I will ask, is there a motion to approve the 1% increase to the LID?
I'll.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Missed that. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. I think that is the routine ones. And so we'll be on to any council ones, and I believe Ms. Cluke, you have the first one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, it was placed at your air tables here. I'd like to have a motion. I'm not going to read the whole thing. What I'm basically asking is to move the $750,000 that would allow for the expansion of the Harrison Street into the U-Bass area, and to hold off on the Harrison Street project until a later date. When this was, I guess I should wait for a second before discussion. Sorry, sir.
Second. So we do have a second. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm bringing this forward. We did this just a couple years back, and at the time of the meeting, there was many discussions going on. Some of the things were not totally clear what was being said back and forth amongst many people. Probably got a little confusing if you watch what was on the video. Many of my constituents were under the full impression that this street was never going to go through. That is not true based off of the contract that was approved that night. But we still had several of us, I believe, were under the impression that we were holding off on that project for many years. I know at one point we had said eight to 10, then there had been a comment, well, more like six to eight years. We didn't make a formal vote at that time, admittedly, but the citizens still left here having heard a developer say, "Well, I'm never going to do this," but did not have the understanding that that's because it was something the city had said that they would do. I just feel like maybe springing it on them this quickly is not appropriate. I would rather do a better job of helping them understand what's going on and giving the city more time to do adequate information out to our citizens to allow for better discussions and not cause as many harm, hard feelings. I think there's other reasons why maybe this shouldn't go in, but truthfully, this is the crux of mine, is that our citizens were led down a path when they were here at that meeting, hearing that the street wasn't going to go in. And I just feel that we need to be more transparent than what we are. If I may, Mayor, I do know I have one constituent in the audience that had asked to come. May I please let him come forward at this time?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Erdman, 926 South Madison Street. I am on the Planning Commission, but I come tonight just as a citizen. I live about a block away from this punch-through from 84th and 370 Development into Trumbull Park. I know there's no other options for connectivity for this project except Harrison Street. And so I'm always in favor of connectivity. I think it's important to be able to get to new developments, whether it's a trail system, roads, sidewalks, whatever that may be. But I have some concerns, and so do my neighbors. My neighbors have expressed these to me as part of my position as Planning Commissioner, but I come tonight just as a citizen for benefit of everybody, even though I'm just speaking for myself. Two issues I need, I'd really like everybody to consider, at least as we, as we go forward with this punch-through. I'm just calling it a punch-through because really that's what it is. First of all, it's really safety and impact. We're bringing this intersection right by a school which has limited parking, one-way traffic now. Valley's going to go from, let me see if I can bring this up here. Perfect. All right. So here's Trumbull Park School. This is the road that's going to go through the park right here. This is Valley out to 84th Street, and this will be Valley over to 90th now, which will carry through. So we're going to be punching this through. So the parking spaces that you see here and here are about the only parking that's around this old school. This is the first elementary school that was built in Papillion besides Chera Heights. So none of this was anticipated. Everybody walked to school. So there's a lot of kids that still walk to school, a lot of traffic impact. This park is still really, really used. And so what's going to happen here is, it's easy to look at a plan and a plat and say, "Okay, well, we're just going to cut this road through," but let's get to the ground level. And this is really what's going to happen here. This is coming down Harrison Street, right to that intersection. As you can see the sign here, school crossing. We're going to punch straight through that, through that park there and ruin the park. There's no way to the, to this side over here, that will probably have to be some kind of parking or something else. There's not enough space there. It's smaller than a lot. It couldn't be sold to put a home on or anything else. And on this side, it's going to divide, and this will have to be moved, and all of these will have to be moved. And so what we're really worried about in the neighborhood is really safety here. We're going to have east-west traffic, and then we're going to have north-south traffic. So this will have to really be designed as almost a four-way stop, as an intersection. And none of this has been planned yet. None of it's been presented to our neighborhood, so we understand the impact. And so that's our real concern, is safety and the impact. The other issue that everybody really wants me to point out is that fairness here in our community about connectivity. This city council, just last year, shut down three road projects for the northeast part of town in Ward 2 because they didn't want these roads punched through, Osage and Beetle, off First Street and Third Street going down to American Parkway. Those were killed off the plan completely because of community input and are certainly the ward member, or the council members for that ward. But one thing that we forget is that for $500,000 on Beetle Street, and I thought we aired, I thought this council aired here by pulling all of those out, was that if we put $500,000 in to take North Beetle, make that intersection there from First Street, it would go to Sixth Street, Cornhusker, and all the way to the high school, Centennial. We could have had a north-south from First Street to the high school that would have taken local traffic burden off 84th and 72nd Street. And so, but we didn't do that because we wanted to keep that, that neighborhood pristine, and we didn't want all the traffic impact and those kinds of things. Let's be fair here, to Trumbull Park, when we planned this, to make sure that the impact is limited, okay? Because we deserve that in our neighborhood. We live in a great neighborhood. Trumbull Park is a fantastic neighborhood. One in five houses still have detached garages. We have alleys behind our houses, those kinds of things. The old core of the city needs to be maintained, and it needs to be respected. And I feel it's pushed so fast, when we were all under the impression that this may take a while. The corps is going to have to be involved, maybe federal agencies, those kinds of things. And then all at once, this is in the next budget, and it's being pushed through really quickly. So let's, I encourage the council to consider a step back for a second and make sure that we understand the true impact and make sure that we get community input from our neighbors. So, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
May I finish with my last comment, sir? The last comment that I have is to remember that we're in a big hurry to spend this $750,000 to go to a project that currently has nothing built. And I understand roads go in first, but I would like us to slow down just a little bit, if at all possible, to stay true to what the citizens heard at the last meeting, and to also wait and see just how this development does develop in the area, and potentially see if the developer really ends up wanting or needing this street. Thank you.
Real quick clarification. Is your intent that the motion to amend is exactly what you had handed out to council? That, I'm going to go ahead and read that just for the public, so they know what it is. I just want to make sure I was reading the right thing. So it was, "I move that Ordinance 2004 be amended as follows. Remove/delete designation of funds for the 2023-2024 capital improvement LID exemptions for Harrison Street span structure in the amount of $750,000, and reallocate those funds to the pavement management fund until such time as a traffic impact study for the Highway 370 mixed-use development is conducted upon issuance of 75% of the necessary certificates of occupancy for the development to determine what type of pedestrian access or road extension, if any, is warranted for Harrison Street. Ordinance would show the following changes in the capital improvement LID exemption section. Deletion of Harrison Street span structure line and pavement management line dollar amount would be amended to the total 3.1 million." That, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was, that was your understanding on the second? Okay. Mr. Ingberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a couple things, to get back on topic, which is Councilmember Cluke's amendment. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit confused, a little surprised that everybody, not everybody, but some people seem to not understand this connection and the process, because this council voted seven to zero, not once, not twice, but three times, to agree to put this connection in and pay for it. The third time we voted on it was the subdivision agreement, which was May of, May 17th, I think, of 2022. Mr. Sunday did not. He abstained. And Mr. Fanslow was not currently on the council at that time, but the seven other members of the council voted unanimously to do the connection and to pay for it. It's right, and all of our information we looked at and we voted on, I've got it right here. The other thing is, I understand that Ms. Cluke's right. When the developer stood, the attorney for the developer stood at the podium that night, he joked that they weren't going to put it in. And he did that because he wasn't. He knew we were going to. But nevertheless, he was asked of the gentleman to my right, if you go back and watch the tapes, listen to the audio and everything else, he was asked, Mr. Gibbons, our planning director, was asked, "Does this subdivision agreement," that's what we did on May 17th, "does it include that we are to put the connection for Harrison Street and pay for it?" His answer was, "Yes, but it may not happen the first year. It may not happen the second year. It could go out several years depending on how the development occurs." So there was no confusion. We all voted for it three times. And the other thing you should understand is there's, there's some triggers built in too, in what we, we passed in the subdivision agreement. Now, Ms. Cluke, and I don't mean, I mean with all due respect, in her amendment, has some new triggers she wants to include. Well, you can't use a budget process to, I don't think, and I'll let the city attorney tell me if I'm dead wrong, you can't use a budget process to assert new triggers into an existing agreement that's been approved by this council and by the developer. The only way I could see you could ever change the triggers is if you had a meeting in the mind, you have the developer and you have the city agree to reopen the subdivision agreement, which would be a mess, and then discuss adding new triggers. So I don't think you could do what the amendment says. Not attorney, but that's the way I read it. The triggers that already exist, if you recall, is the city is obligated to do the connection. They're obligated to pay for it. But the first thing that happens, has to happen is, the Army Corps of Engineers has to give permission to the city to modify the covenant of the dedication for that particular property and record it, and recorded. Once that is provided to the city, the next trigger is, in the event that the modification of the covenant of dedication is approved by the Army Corps of Engineers, it says, "The city shall," not "may," it's not optional, it says, "the city shall dedicate the right-of-way for the South Harrison Street extension." And after that, the next trigger is, construction would begin. We don't have tonight around this council, we don't know if it's going to be done next year, year, year three. As the developers told us in the past, there's a possibility it, they may decide not to connect it. But my point is too, is you don't use a budget to try to make this kind of change, and I don't see putting this money into another project to just spend it. That's not good use of tax planning and tax dollars. What should happen, if anything, is it should be placed in a reserve fund or Howard Nancy would, we can't do a sinking fund. It's illegal for us to do that. But we might be able to find some way to delay it, and my thought is by adding it to the one-to-six-year road program. But the point is, we can't, we don't, I don't want to waste money, and then two years from now, we're going, "God, I wish we had that $750,000 back." So I just wanted to clear up a couple things, because there is a misconception that we were misled or didn't understand. But we had three bites of the apple, and seven of us voted for it every time. As I said, Mr. Sunday did, because he had a conflict of interest and abstained. So for that reason, I don't think it's appropriate, and I won't vote for it, but I appreciate Ms. Cluke's efforts, and I understand why she did it. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday?
With all due respect to Mr. Ingberg, you can be confused and surprised all you want that people didn't understand, but I can tell you right now that people did not understand. You've heard it from a citizen from that neighborhood that was at the meeting. You've heard from Ms. Cluke. I didn't understand this either, and I'm sure others didn't either. So whether or not we should have understood, the fact is that some that were present, and were listening, didn't understand that it meant what you say it meant. Now, nothing that I just heard Mr. Ingberg say justifies going forward immediately with this. There's, there's no harm in waiting and taking a more measured and studied approach to this, which respects the citizens that live in that area, which we did for your constituents. We did that for your constituents. We listened to them, and we ultimately made at least a temporary decision not to extend those streets. I can tell you that if my ward citizens don't get the same respect that they deserve, I may just change my opinion on those others, and it might come up again. That's all I have.
Mr. Stube?
Got it. Very good. Thank you. So a couple things. One is that I agree with Mr. Ingberg that, you know, we've, we've approved three different times having this extension, but I do want to make sure that I get Mr. Gibbons to talk a little bit about the steps that we have to go through, because obviously, this is just putting money into the budget. It doesn't necessarily authorize anything to happen, which has to come back to the city council for approval. So if Travis could maybe go through a little bit the steps that have to take place before we would even expend any money that's, that could end up in the budget.
Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you. As, as Mr. Ingberg was saying, as in the subdivision agreement for the South Harrison Street connection for that extension to be done, the covenant of dedication and modification with the Army Corps of Engineers is the number one step. My understanding, I talked with Mike Kleffner, our Public Works Director, throughout this whole process. They are doing the stream stabilization along the creek. That process has to be completed before they could do the dedication easement modification. That may be another year away by the time they do that process. I mean, Mr. Kleffner can speak to that a little bit more in more detail. After that portion, we would go through the Corps of Engineers on the modification. I don't know how long that process takes. I would work with Mike Kleffner again on that. I'm sorry, my screen will blink. And then after that, if we do get the modification, we would then proceed with a right-of-way dedication through Trumbull Park. A right-of-way dedication is another opportunity for the city council to look at the, and we have to have approval by the city council for the right-of-way dedication. After the dedication, then we would order, the city would then order the extension for the Harrison Street connection. And again, there would be the design process with Mr. Kleffner, with the Public Works Department. They would have to design whether it's going to be a span bridge, or it's going to be a culvert. It'd have to go through the design and bidding process as well. So that's, again, another process that may take some time as well. So again, there is time here. There is, there is probably years here as well for the approvals, the design, and the construction of this project.
Thank you. So, so to be clear, obviously Travis indicated that there's, there's multiple steps that would have to take place in order for even construction to take place. And so going through kind of an evaluation of that particular situation, I think having it in the budget at least gives an indication that we, and I agree with the Planning Commission member, is that connectivity is important to me. I think if you start looking at individuals that live north of the proposed development, there's really only two ways they can go, and that's over to the, the major streets. And I think having some connectivity between neighborhoods is something that I support. So I don't plan on supporting this amendment.
Mr. Gaines?
Well, I just want to back up what Councilman Sunday had to say, is that I was sitting here also, and actually I have read the agreement, and it's, there are words like "shall" in there, but it's a very vague agreement. And so I actually have the minutes from that March 17th, or May 17th meeting, and Councilwoman Cluke specifically asked about that, that cut-through. And the response on that was, it was a, "Mr. Beller provided information relative to concerns discussed by opponents, added that South Harrison Street connection would be a much later phase if it happens at all." And so while, you know, maybe we, some of us made a mistake not knowing exactly what we were voting for, a lot of times as council members... what we were voting for, a lot of times as council members, you know, we have to listen to what developers say and listen to what the city staff says, because not everybody in here has a, a legal education or is a contract specialist or whatever, you know, and so we, we rely on that heavily, and I, and I recall it, actually I thought it was this year that we had the meeting, that's my recollection of it, it's that recent. My issue with this is, is that a lot of times things change, and I, and I think that Councilwoman Klug is, um, trying to adapt in case things do change. For anybody here that, you know, knows the development behind Papio Bay, that's been sitting there for 15 years with foundations and just several houses, you know, putting this money in the budget today is not necess, it's not necessary. Um, and then, let's just say that it takes two years and we put the bridge there, and seven years down the line, we still haven't progressed, and we, we've built a bridge to nowhere for three quarters of a million dollars on taxpayers' money. Um, heaven forbid, they went bankrupt, and then in 10 years from now, we're spending $350,000 to remove this bridge. So it's not anti-connectivity and it's not, um, being partial to one ward or another, um, even though as we sit today, Harrison Street is in, um, Councilwoman Klug and Councilman Sunday's ward, but in four weeks, the north side of Harrison Street will be in Ward Two. So, hey, you know, I was against this when it was Ward, were you in Ward Three? Ward Three, and I'm against it when it's in Ward Two, so it's really irrelevant. Um, I just think that slowing down a little bit, and as Mr. Gibbons has said, that it's gonna be a process. So, maybe between now and the time that this process commences, we can go back and modify this agreement. I think it's reasonable, even if it, it ends up not being 75%, if it's 50%, if it's upon completion of the first, you know, phases that are directly affected, there's, there's gotta be some alternatives to the just budgeting this today, and then it, it goes in and nothing ever develops there. I think it's just responsible to hold off, and I'm gonna support Councilwoman Klug, um, for that reason.
Just, just a quick clarification, if I could, and I'm, I'm gonna say it again, and Mr. Sunday, I appreciate you threatening on the record my constituents that you were gonna mess with the process over there. I appreciate you, they'll be hap, they'll be happy to hear that, they'll be very happy to hear that. Um, my point is, everybody's talking about slow down and take it easy, and you're missing the point of, we've already agreed to this three times. Can we, as Mr. Gaines said, can we bring it back and, and look at it again? I, but I'm, you know, I don't understand why we were discussing necessarily, and, and to Mr. Sunday's point, they did a traffic study in that area you're talking about that Jason and I represent. They also did a traffic study in this area. So I don't know how you're trying to equate that one group's being treated differently than the other, but I'm not gonna argue that point, that's old news, but I just think that we need to get our budget passed tonight, because if we don't pass it tonight, we have no other time. If we don't pass it tonight, we have no tax revenue, we can't pay our employees, and we can't pay our bills. This isn't Washington DC, we need to do our business here and take care of it. This isn't going to harm anything keeping this in our budget. You just heard Mr. Gibbons say, "It may take a while anyway," and it doesn't matter because we're obligated to do it. This isn't an option. That's all I have.
Um, Mr. Fanslow.
Thank you, yes. Um, so as everybody's made clear, I was not on council when this passed, but I was sitting in the audience. Um, so I was here, um, I can't tell you that I totally understood it that day because I wasn't in your seats, I wasn't in my seat. But what I've done since this has become an issue recently is I went back and listened to the recording twice, actually almost, almost three times, I almost got it through it three times. And I heard timeframes of two to six as a question, will it be about two to six? I heard a response, it could be anywhere from two to, two to 10. So, I talked to Mrs. Klug over, a few times over the last couple of weeks, and that's a year and a half ago, so I, I, I agree, or I, I appreciate Travis's input that it's still, according to Travis and, and Mike Cleffner, it's still going to be a while before this connection goes in. And as, as a citizen back then and as a council member now who's listened to that recording, I, I'm not gonna say what everybody understood or what they didn't understand that night, but what I heard is two to six, two to eight. I think if the timeline is true what Travis is talking about, we're within that two to six, if not five to eight. I don't know what that timeframe will be, but I think it'll fall within that timeframe. Uh, we've talked about a lot connectivity, and I was on the council when those connections did not go through, through to First Street. I, I look at this connection a little differently. Um, I've worked on many developments in my career, a lot of them, them around schools, and what the traffic engineers tell me is, the more connections and the more throughput you have around those schools can help the confusion of those people picking up and dropping off their kids. And if there are dead ends or they don't have many options, sometimes they get frustrated and sometimes they make traffic movements that are even less safe for the kids who are crossing those streets. So, I'm gonna continue to advocate for the funding for Harrison Street connection. Thank you.
Ms. Klug.
Thank you. Um, I understand about the changing of the contract that was already voted on multiple times. I have never been afraid to suggest and ask and even make calls myself to visit with a developer to say, "Would you consider?" And while I would never do it without full city support, I think it's short-sighted, in my opinion, if we don't at least make the attempt to do what our citizens are requesting us to ask them to do, asking us to do. Um, I also have been told, while I have not seen the documentation, that the first time the developer came in and saw the city, they didn't have Harrison Street punched through. They had simply put in their own development, and it was the city who went back and said, "Probably need another connectivity point," which somewhat disappoints me about the city, and I will admit openly, I'm torn on this, because I do believe in connectivity, especially in our new areas. But it is not an item that I see favorably in pre-existing communities, because it will change the makeup of that corner there on Harrison and Valley where it's being put in, and it will affect the people further down the road on Valley, it will affect those further down on Harrison. And I feel it's kind of unfair to say, "Hey, we're going to totally change this," when there's quite possibly other options available. So, of course I'm going to support my own amendment, I believe it is more of the correct way, and I certainly would never use the term "waste of money" to move money into the U-Base program. That's supposed to be a 10-year project, that's now probably estimated to take 12 years because we keep annexing streets. So, I would not consider that a waste of money in any shape or form. More importantly, I really do believe our citizens believed this was going to be considerably further out, and I think we need to be respectful of what they thought was going to happen.
No comment on the timing or anything, I just wanted to clarify one quick point. Um, you mentioned staff is the one that recommended that in, I had done some research on it, and it's on our city website. The developer had, um, had several concepts, and then they had an open charrette where they invited council and some public in for about a two or three-day design process, and the final version of what they came out with, and it's on the website, did have the connection in there, so it was kind of an open process. Uh, council staff, developer and some public did participate in that, but that, it came out of that. Um, Mr. Gaines.
Well, I don't know if I agree with Councilman Ingberg or not, whether or not we can modify this contract through a, through a budget process. So, I, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a substitute amendment to remove this money from this year's budget in an effort to make sure that this year's budget passes. And then at that point in time, if some other people wanna come back in the meantime and renegotiate or send this to committee or whatever is chosen to do, um, then that's what I'm gonna do. But I'm gonna make a substitute amendment to just remove this money from this year's budget, and we'll go from there.
Before I call for a second, I wanna, 'cause there's a lot of potential impacts based on state legislation and requirements and lit authorities and how money's used, I just wanna ask, um, Nancy, if it's just removed, 'cause that's what I understand the potential motion is, if it's just removed, does that have any impacts on you, on the budget, on the budget form, our tax ask or anything we've done? 'Cause there's a difference between just removing it-
Well-
-and leaving it to an assigned-
Let me specify-
...which is under the restricted funds.
Whatever fund that it's in right now, if it's in road funds-
Yeah.
-then it, then it stays in road funds and it, and it can go to the U-Base program, and that's, or the city can use it for whatever category it is in, in the accounting system.
Well, if you're, if you're, well, I'm hearing two things. The first one, and again, I wanna be very careful because this has state-level impacts, um, the first comment was remove it, the second one was potentially leave it on U-Boss. If it stays on U-Boss, I believe that's Mrs. Klug's original motion to amend.
Well, it, it is, so, w- we can, I, I'll make a, a substitute motion to amend it and leave it where Ms. Klug recommended, but also Ms. Klug's amendment does-
You're removing the triggers.
It removes the triggers.
Okay.
And so then we can come back and if we wanna make changes-
I think we're okay from a state perspective. So the, just to clarify, so the motion is to, um, remove the Harrison Street structure at 750 and move it to U-Boss, just remove the other items. So it's a substitute motion, is there a second? So we have a second, so discussion on the motion, on the substitute motion. Anything else, Mr. Gaines?
Well, I'll just add, I think I've already said it, but Mr. Ingberg might be correct that potentially that's not the proper way to renegotiate this contract. So if, if there are council members out there that wanna renegotiate the contract, or if you choose to send it to committee to see if a committee wants to renegotiate it, then I would be in support of that. Um, beings that Mr. Gibbons has already spoken and testified that there, you know, we're not under any time crunch, so by not doing this, we're not stalling the project up. I think it's, there's a level of fairness to the constituents, there's a level of fairness for the work that Mr. Ingberg put in, the work that Councilwoman Klug put in, I think it's a good alternative somewhere in the middle, and I think that all of us then can move forward and vote for this budget and just move on.
Any other discussion on the substitute motion? And again, just to be clear, the substitute motion is to remove the Harrison Street span at 750, move it to U-Boss as you'd originally proposed at the 3.1, and those are the only items. No other discussion, please vote on the substitute motion, if we're ready. Okay, go ahead and vote.
Sir?
Yes.
Does that mean if it goes back to U-Boss, it automatically gets spanned?
Three a's, four nays by Glover, Fanslow, Stube and Ingberg.
So that motion fails, that was a substitute motion, so your motion's not on the floor. So, I'll guess, are there any other motions to amend? Seen none. Then we are, we have the, Mr. Gaines.
I have, I have a question then, for finance. If, if you remove this money, and, do we have a, a reserve fund that it can be moved into?
The motion, the substitute motion moved it to U-Boss.
But that's not a, is that a U-Boss reserve fund?
No, it's the actual U-Boss.
Okay.
We'll, we'll-
So-
We'll either, we'll either increase the scope of U-Boss by that amount and do more streets, or if it, if we don't use it all, then it'll become a carryover, um, item, and then when we, a lot of times when we have the projects and we don't use it all, we do a carryover.
So to-
But one way or another it'd be allocated to U-Boss.
To satisfy the state statute of not just having it hang out there, make a, a motion to remove the 750 from the budget and, and reserve, put it in a reserve fund or reserve it for this expenditure in the future so that it's not spent but it's reserved?
I'm gonna make a comment, but I'm gonna look to Nancy. Um, and again, there's specifics between sinking funds and reserve funds, and they have very specific meetings in state, and that's why I wanna, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but basically it needs to be allocated to a project. And if, if it, if it's allocated to a project, especially in the roads world, we've really not impacted the budget, it's just one project to another, but if we remove it and just throw it to reserves or other things, I think we're starting to impact the budget a little bit, and that's where I'd look to Nancy. Create a sinking fund. One of the, and it's, so she's thinking about that, and I, I wanna be careful, 'cause I don't wanna get into the discussion and sway it one way or the other, I just wanna guide it, but, um, as I've been learning about, as I, what I know about the budget, if it stays with a project, if the intent is just to delay the project to some future date, um, and still have council control of what is that future date, one of the ways it could be accomplished, I think, if the concern is you put it to U-Boss, now the money is spent, now at the point we need to do it, we don't have the money reserved. If the idea is to reserve it, one of the mechanisms might be, um, that you, um, remove it, not remove it, but, uh, I think it's back to a trigger, and the trigger could be the six-year plan, um, because that's a, that's an annual document, the state, the council approves, the state has that document, you're not changing the subdivision agreement, it would still be allocated to that project, it, the timing would just be controlled by the six-year plan. That could be a mechanism that still leaves the money with the project but pushes it out as well, but has another council vote, so I just wanna be real careful how we're affecting the budget, and that's why I wanna be baby steps, and I'll keep looking to Nancy, but I don't know if that answered your question.
Uh, it, it semi answers it. What if I was to make a motion to remove it from the budget, put it in the U-Boss, but before those funds could be spent this year, it'd have to come back before council for
Well, the U-Boss contract gets approved by council.
So if we were gonna spend those, that specifically, if we were gonna spend that $750,000 before we spend any of that part of that budget, it would have to come back specifically just that part and be approved by-
'Cause we have another blanket approval on the U-Boss contract, the, when U-Boss comes forward for this next year, that contract still needs to come before us, doesn't it? So you would have another vote on U-Boss, on the specific contract.
Well, I'll, I'll make that motion and we'll see if that-
Can you clarify the motion?
The, the motion is to remove the $750,000 from the Harrison Street punch-through from this year.
We've already done that with the, with the previous motion.
Okay, move it to U-Boss, and then before that money, that specifically, that $750,000 is being allocated to be spent, that it must come back before council.
So the previous substitute motion already moved it to U-Boss, the, I think the only thing you're adding is the specific, oh, that one failed, I'm sorry.
Correct.
I'm getting caught up in my own conversations.
So, that's my motion.
So you're making a motion to remove the 750 from Harrison, put it to U-Boss with the understanding in the motion that you approve that contract?
Correct.
Is that clear? Second by Mr. Sunday? Okay, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so, so again, just to be clear, is that we're talking about an multimillion-dollar budget, we're talking about $750,000. Putting that money in the budget doesn't authorize any action by anybody. Any action that takes place on that 750 has to come back in front of city council for approval. So if it's spending dollars to hire somebody, if it's changing agreement or whatever, all of that has to come back in front of city council. All it does is put a placeholder in the budget of 750, doesn't authorize that money to be expended until it comes back to council for consideration. To me, that's the time where we discuss about whether it's up or down.
Mr. Gaines.
I, I dis, I'd normally, I would agree with you. Um, in this case, the way that the contract is written, it basically gives them authorization without coming back to us to begin construction of that road.
No, there'll be several required votes by council, 'cause we gotta dedicate the right-of-way and we can't do that with a council approval, and we have to let the contract for the, for the design, that'll come to council, we have to let the contract for the construction, and that'll come to council.
But specifically to authorize spending of the money, that's what we're doing tonight by putting it in the budget?
We're allocated, the, the budget allocates the money to the project, the spending of the money then is the, is your sub, is your later vote for the contract itself.
And so, so the intent of, of my, of my motion is, is multiple, the first intent is to take that $750,000 and pull it out of that project, and if there, 'cause I know that there are council members on this, on this council that would like to see this contract renegotiated, by taking that money off of that contract, it gives them the opportunity to do that, and if you wanted to send it to committee, they certainly could.
I don't, I don't, I wanna be careful with intent. I don't, I don't, I want to be careful with intent. I don't think pulling it from the budget will require a renegotiation of the contract. The contract's already signed, and it obligates us. So all it does, it removes the authorization from this budget, which then just means that sometime in the future, we'll have to find the money again and get it back in the budget, because the contract already obligates us to do the road.
That's correct. But as we went around here tonight, the first thing we heard was Councilman Ingberg say that he's not sure that we can change this contract and change the triggers through the budget process. I'm not, I don't totally disagree with him. While we may be able to do it, I don't disagree that it may not be the right way to do it. So what my amendment is, is to take that money out, so if there are people that have an interest in renegotiating the contract before we reallocate the money, that they have an opportunity to do it. So that's where I'm going with, with the amendment.
So the motion on the second, just to clarify, because we're in the discussion, so we have a motion, a second on the floor. The motion is to remove the 750 from the project, put it to U-Boss with the specific intent that the U-Boss contract comes back before the council for approval.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is that, was that clear on the second? What I restated, is that what you thought you were seconding? Okay. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Gaines?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Glover.
So, the money's in, in this pot, $750,000, and it can only be spent if, if we have a vote of the city council that says go ahead to do that.
That's correct.
Is it, that it can only be spent on the project we're talking about, or, or the-
If, if it, the way the budget was presented, it is tagged to that specific project, and that's allocating the dollars to that project for this year. Because we have the available funds, we go in ahead and allocated it. Now, based on what Mr. Gibbons is saying, if the core, the right-of-way, all of that takes a couple of years, that's then when we did do the carryover, because every year you see we carry over specific project dollars, because they've been allocated, but we haven't spent them. So then we'll do the carryovers up until the time it's actually spent. But this is, this is the allocation, if that makes sense.
So this scenario comes up that we, we have a council member or two or three that decide next year they want to spend that on something else, then can, can we vote to do that, or?
It'd probably be a budget amendment, but I'll look to Nancy for that specific. If we've already allocated money to a specific project that's been carried over, then the subsequent budget wants to remove it and move it to somewhere else. That's a budget action.
I think that can be done through the budget process, either amendment, or if, if it goes unspent, it doesn't get carried forward for that project.
Because my concern is that next year we'll come back, do the same thing, sit here and talk for an hour and then spend it on something else, and we're no further along on this project or, or funding this project than we, than we are right now. So, you know, to me, it would be a lot simpler if we could just put it in a separate pot earmarked for that, and then we don't have to worry about whether somebody's going to come by and, and try to move it to a, spend it for a different reason.
And the way the current budget was proposed, that basically did create the earmark, because it is the allocation of that project. I think the point then that was missing was the trigger conversations of at what point in time would the project be done, would it be this year or six years from now? Mr. Glover, Mr. Sunday?
Yeah, I think Mr. Gaines raised a really good point about the possibility of a renegotiation, especially since I heard here tonight that, and maybe I learned this for the first time tonight, I think, I think I hadn't heard it before, but, but that this road was not the developer's idea in the first place, it was the city's idea. And so it seems to me that there might be some room for negotiation if the developer doesn't really feel that strongly about it. And I, I still don't, I haven't heard any reason why this has to be in this year's budget. I haven't heard a reason. And yet you're going to be asking for all of our votes on the budget when you need a super majority for it to pass under the emergency clause. If you want to play a game of chicken, I guess, go for it, but I'm asking everybody here to reason with us. This doesn't have to be passed in this year's budget. There's no reason it has to. That's all I have to say about it.
Ms. Kluk?
Thank you. Yes, I attended all those meetings with this developer when they were putting all their pretty designs and sheets up. And I can dig through my phone, and I will. Most of their first designs that we went into were rough designs, and I have zero recollection of them trying to cut across the creek because it's expensive. It's expensive, and at that time, we were talking about how it was protected by the Army Corps of Engineers, how it would be a city project. So it came up later on as we went through with many of the other items. So it was during those meetings, as the mayor says. So, you know, do I have it in writing someplace on me at this exact second? No. I'll be the first one to tell you, I do not. But having attended every night of those meetings, as did some other council members, I know Councilman Ingberg was there, and I think at the time, Councilman Jaworski was there. And many things were suggested. They did a great job trying to be at the table and working with us, hearing our comments, you know. And so, yes, did it end up on there on the last night? Yes. Does that mean that that's where they started? No, that's not where they started.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So just to be clear, tested a third time, the vote is to remove the 750 from Harrison Street project, put it to U-Boss with the understanding the U-Boss contract comes back before council. Okay, please vote.
Four yeas, three nays by Fanslaw, Stube, and Ingberg.
So I'm just going to clarify with the city attorney, because questions come up before, even though there's a majority on the vote, state law is a majority of the whole council, or is it a majority of those present?
For the, for the amendment, it's my understanding that the, the way it- I apologize, yes. There we go. For the, for the amendment noting that this is not in a vote on the actual budget, which does have the emergency clause, it would be the, the majority of the councils, my understanding, is how it has been managed here in the city in the past.
Okay. Because historically on, because we're on a motion to amend, on a main motion, it's the majority of the whole, which is five affirmative to pass, and that's why I just wanted to clarify on a motion to amend, is it treated different? So it sounds like it's a lower standard.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you saying that it's a tie vote right now?
Well, it's four-three.
But we need one more vote for this amendment to pass? Is that what you're saying?
If it would pass, it would take one more. If it's not a major, if it's not a majority of the, of the, of the, those present.
Are you saying, Ms. Hudler, that it requires a majority of the council present, or the majority of the entire council?
Yeah, and that's my question.
My recollection, I consulted with my predecessor on this as well, and my interpretation of this is that, hang on just one moment, please, I want to make sure I'm referencing the right section here. Yeah, for the, for the motion to amend, my understanding is that the way it has been done in the past, and I think this is consistent with the requirements, is that it would be five votes to pass, so a majority of the elected council members.
So a motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
You've set a precedent in the past in this exact same situation, that you've cast a vote to break what would otherwise be a failure due to one vote short. You did that just a few months ago.
We've had a number of them in my 15 years, and I've been at one.
I guess I'm just asking the mayor to consider doing that here.
Yeah, my general practice is not to do it over the 15 years. Any other motions to amend? If not, discussion on the motion as amended. Well, we had a substitute motion, so. We, she had her motion on the floor. We had a substitute motion, so that replaced that one, and then that's the one that, then that one failed, and then we had another motion to amend, and that failed, so we're back to the original.
The original budget?
Correct.
If we're back to the original budget, then, then I want to make the amendment to the original budget if I could. Tell me if I'm putting this in the wrong place.
We're at the point for, for the-
If I'm in the wrong place, let me know.
We're at the point for the next one, if there is another one.
I'd like to amend Ordinance 2004 and move that, and I move that Section 2 of Ordinance 2004 be amended to remove the emergency designation made in the ordinance with Section 2 to read as follows. The effective date, Section 2, would read, "This ordinance shall be in full force and effect between, full force and effect 15 days after its passage." And that's my motion.
So the motion is to remove the emergency clause?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Isn't Ms. Kluk's original motion still on?
No, because his was a substitute motion. Correct.
To answer your question-
Now, there's an alternate version that could come up, but that was, that was a substitute.
But, but yes, that's my intention, to remove the emergency clause and using that language.
Do we have a motion to remove the emergency clause? Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Stube. And just for the public, it's a general practice to have the emergency clause in the budget, and another item we'll do later on. Sometimes there's a timing issue. If we, state law is when an ordinance is passed, there's a 15-day waiting period before it becomes effective. The emergency clause waives that 15, so it's effective immediately. And it's fairly typical in the budget process that we have the emergency clause. Otherwise, it won't be effective until after the start of the fiscal year, and then we couldn't pay bills. But I think with timing this year, would, would there be any unintended consequences of, I just want to make sure council's really aware of what we're doing. Would there be any unintended consequences of removing the emergency clause this year? I don't think so based on calendar.
Right. I mean, staff will be paid on the last day of September.
Which is the current fiscal year.
Current fiscal year. The bills that you would approve at that first meeting on the 3rd of October would have to have a special statement on that resolution. That payment will not occur till the 4th, when the budget's effective. General practice, we don't write checks till the next morning anyway.
So based on the calendar, no material effect this year. Okay. So there's a motion on the second to remove the emergency clause. Any discussion on that? Mr. Ingberg?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gaines?
So the emergency clause voted on separately from the budget?
No, the emergency- The emergency clause historically is just part of the budget. It's part of the motion. And so that's when we're back to the original motion. It had the emergency in it, so this is the amendment to remove it.
So the budget requires a majority vote, correct?
Budget requires a majority unless it has the emergency clause in it. That requires a super majority.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We're back now to the original budget as amended without the emergency clause.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let's revisit that last motion that you said failed. Now that there's no longer an emergency clause, wouldn't it be a simple majority?
On the budget?
On the, on the amendment that just failed, even though it had four votes and only three against.
Because the super majority was specific to the emergency clause. That one was a simple majority, but it's a majority of the whole council.
Why, why does it take more than a simple majority of those present when there's a quorum present to pass a simple amendment? I don't think that's correct.
My understanding from Mr. Thielin, when he was here, the reading of the state statute is a majority of the whole council, not the majority of the council present. But that's where I wanted clarification.
So you're telling me that the motion, or the, the bill in front of us itself only needs a simple majority, but amendment to it-
Of, of the whole council.
Even though there's a quorum present?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But that's where I wanted clarification from the city attorney, but that was the ruling of Mr. Thielin and when we had the question prior. You have to have a quorum of the council to do business, but then when we're handling an item, it needs to be a majority of the whole council, which is the five affirmative. Any other, do you have another question, Mr. Sunday?
No, I'm trying to turn this speaker off.
Any other amendments? If not, please vote.
Six yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is item F5, Resolution R230152. A resolution to approve a filing extension until December 29, 2023, for the 72-place Phase 2 final plat for the property legally described as all of Outlet D, 72 place, together with part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter located in Section 1, Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of 72nd Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Papio Park LLC, 72-place Phase 2. It's our motion to approve Resolution R230152. Motion by Councilman Fanslaw? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? State name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mr., members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West End Road, appearing on behalf of 72 Place Development or Papio Park LLC. I'm simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any council discussion? Yes, Ms. Kluk?
I'm going to support this because I believe that we need development, and it's a positive thing. I do just want to point out that this has been extended multiple times, and I think we need to potentially, as a city, just discuss if there should be a limit to extensions. I'm not advocating one way or the other, or if we have to keep extending them, if there's a point where there's a certain extension fee or something like that, to try to encourage our developers to keep moving on. Like I said, I'm voting for this, I'm good. I just think that the city in whole needs to look at this, because this is not the only project, and I'm certainly not picking on you, Mr. Jovanardi.
No, I understand that.
We did have one not too long ago. I'm going to look to Mr. Gibbons, because we actually do have a policies. I want him to clarify it so we all know what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. The subdivision regulations allow the applicant to ask for three extensions, which are 90 days in length total. They also have a fee that they have to pay, which is half of the preliminary plat fees or the filing fees that they paid at the time of the final plat. So they paid their, it was, I believe, it was about a $605 fee to ask for this three, three-month extension.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please, Mr. Sunday?
I'd just point out, I'm looking at the reasoning, and it's saying, due to the housing market, and basically what it's saying, I think, is that there's more supply than there is demand right now, and that doesn't bode well for a lot of projects around here. And maybe we ought to, maybe not, not be moving so fast on a lot of these projects if that's really the state of what's going on. We need to start paying close attention.
Mr. Jobin?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. No, I'm not, I think there's still actually a shortage of lots out there, I think, from a supply perspective. I think what this is, this is just the third and final extension, because you only are allowed three extensions. This is because of the market conditions right now, the interest rate. And once we file the, the, record the final plat, it sets in place the public streets, the right-of-way, all of the boundary, lot line easements, et cetera. And I think what they're trying to do, the developer, is to determine whether this is the plat they want to go forward with, or do they want to redesign it and maybe make either bigger lots or smaller lots, depending on what the market conditions are. But I think that there is still a shortage of supply of lots in the Omaha metropolitan area. I don't think that that was reflected by this extension.
Mr. Sunday?
It says, "Due to the current housing market, with the mortgage rate influx and the lower number of potential new construction home buyers in the market, the development team is requesting to file a third and final 90-day filing extension per city code." That's why I took that to mean you- That's why I took that to mean you have more supply than you have demand. Was that an unreasonable conclusion that I reached?
No, I think you're probably a fair conclusion based upon what the engineer said in their letter. But I think overall, and I'm, like I said, I'm not a market study guy, but I, I think from what I understand is that there's still, uh, a short shortage of lots out there, and there's still high demand, although the, the demand has certainly shrunk back a little bit primarily because of the interest rates and, uh, and just the cost of building houses generally. But I'm not sure that the number of lots out there is necessarily, you know, too many lots.
Thank you.
That's my own personal opinion, but.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is F six, ordinance two thousand six. An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Chapter sixty-nine regarding salaries. Your motion to approve ordinance two thousand six. Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
Motion passes. A little bit of a related item, F seven, ordinance two thousand seven. An ordinance to establish the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four salary ranges for management and exempt positions. Your motion to approve ordinance two thousand seven. Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Glover.
Mayor, I'd like to make, when, when is it appropriate? I need to make a motion regarding this item.
It would be, well, we got the second, it would be appropriate.
Okay. Uh, again, I'd like to amend ordinance two zero zero seven. This has to do with the emergency clause once again. I move that ordinance two zero zero seven be amended in a limited fashion to remove the emergency designation made in the ordinance recitals in section four with recitals and section four to read as follows. This order shall be in full fe, be in full force and effect within fifteen days after its passage.
And again, it's an annual item. We usually do have the emergency ordinance, so it's kind of like the previous discussion, it's being removed. But again, Nancy, is there any unintended consequences if that's done? Or based on the calendar, we'd be okay?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to amend to remove the emergency clause, and we have a second. Any discussion? Oh, I missed the second. So we just have a motion, do we have a second? Mr., oh, Mr. Glover did, I'm sorry. No discussion, please vote.
Six yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. There is a staff, uh, motion to amend, um, the budget included, and we talked about it in the one-on-one budget meetings. The community development coordinator, we were downgrading that position, and then we were adding the utility services manager, and both of those need to be in band C subgrade four, and those weren't listed on this attachment. So we, we, uh, we'd like to, an amendment to add the community services development coordinator, the utility services to band C subgrade four. Is there, council member that'll make that motion? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Mr. Fanslow. Any discussion on that item? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Seven eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Any other motions to amend? Any discussion on the motion as amended? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Uh, next, next is F eight, resolution R twenty-three zero-one-five-three. A resolution to prove an agreement with Hawkins Construction for construction of restrooms and a parking lot at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Site. Your motion to approve resolution R twenty-three zero-one-five-three? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Any proponents or opponents? Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Um, none of the committees were met. Any comments from the floor? Yes, sir. When you come up, if you'd state your name for the record and comments from the floor, we'll give three minutes.
I'll try to do my best in three minutes. My name is Len Faulkner. I am currently the vice president of the pro organization, past president and director of soccer. It has recently come to my attention that the practice fields being utilized by Papillion Soccer, uh, which are located at the Papio Bay facility, uh, has resulted in some serious injuries. Uh, we've had, in the last six weeks, we have had ten total injuries, uh, two of which have resulted in very serious injuries. We've had a broken leg and a complete knee reconstruction due to the condition of those fields. Uh, in the past, I have been in conversation with Parks and Recreation about what can be done. I, I'm not here to point fingers at any one organization, any council members or anyone else. I simply want to try and get those kids off of an unsafe practice field onto better fields. I was told that the master plan for the development of the landing would include a movement of the current players that are practicing at the Papio Bay facility over to the old game fields, which are located just to the east of the landing. That would take effect once the new game fields were implemented, which are on the west and north side of the landing. That has been completed. Those fields have been in use since last fall. There was no movement to get those kids off of the Papio Bay fields, which are not being maintained by the city any longer, and over to the game fields. When I went to Parks and Recreation to ask why, it was because we did not request a permit to do so. We were never told that we would need a permit to do so. All I'm advocating tonight is to have you guys help me figure out a way to get those kids moved back over under the, the, the design of the master plan, which allowed for that to take place. And it, it didn't, didn't mention to us that we needed to permit anything. I've had a conversation with Tracy to talk about how we need to go forward with this. But I'm asking for your help to get this done sooner than later. Uh, I have asked the city Parks and Recreation to get with the state director for soccer, N Y S L, Nebraska Youth Soccer League, and find out how many games are left yet to be scheduled before the fall season ends. And if possible, have them relocate those games to other, other parks, other, uh, other facilities, uh, by other clubs, which would then open those fields up for play by our kids, and they can come over and practice on fields that were dedicated for that anyway. And so I'm just here to appeal for your help to try to expedite that so we don't get any boy, any boys or girls injured in the remaining six weeks of soccer for the fall.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Sunday.
Yeah, I, this is kind of contrary to what I had been led to understand. I was led to understand that your organization was failing to sign a memorandum, memorandum of understanding to maintain this practice field that you say is dangerous. Is that untrue? That's not?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so, so you did sign the memorandum that was presented?
No, I, I would like to see what the memorandum is about.
I want to, I want to be, I want to just double check with you. I want to be real careful because it's not a published agenda item.
The reason, okay, I, I understand, Mayor, but this was the information that was sent to us this week.
What I was going to suggest is maybe, um, one of the administrators, yourself, maybe I and him get together after council.
Okay.
That way we're not having a discussion on a item that wasn't published.
Thank you.
Is that okay with you? Okay. And just for the public, um, we generally can only have active dialogue and discussion on things that were actually published on the agenda. So obviously, anything coming up during council comments, we can't actively dialogue on. But once the meeting's adjourned, we'll get together. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Welcome.
My name's Dick Creek, twelve oh seven Rogers Drive. For most of my life, I was a pastor, so don't let this scare you.
Should I give a time one of them?
I'll shoot for five. Two weeks ago, I went to made a donation at Goodwill. As I came up, light was red, I waited. Light turned green. As you know, there's a little incline, you know? And if it hadn't been a woman right across the road go like that, I wouldn't have seen one of these huge pickups doing at least forty-five miles an hour blow through the red light. I would have been dead. It happens all over in this city, constantly. Go to Let's Talk Papillion, and I posted on there to get people's feelings about what's happening in this city. They're angry, they're fearful. Couple of them said, sadly, this is one of the main reasons why I don't like to leave my house. Heck, I've driven in taxis in Seoul, Paris, and Kuwait and felt safer in that insanity. Giles and Seventy-second are awful, especially massive trucks flying through red lights. Is it worth me losing my livelihood? No, I tell myself this every day when I get in my car. Very seldom, and throughout the week, I will say this, I'll see at least three to four vehicles running a red light blatantly. I can be stopped, and I can hear them coming. Thanks to Officer, there he is, Officer Nelson. That's a seventy-five dollar ticket. That's crap. Pastors can use that word every once in a while. Seventy-five, if I take my wife out for a nice meal, that's seventy-five bucks. I can run a red light, he's going to pull me over and say, here's your ticket. All right, whatever. I move on, he moves on. It's a matter of time that this city does something about this. I think this touches every one of your wards unlike previous discussions tonight. This is everybody. Now, the reason I bring this partly is because I want to live. I don't know about you, if you feel like it's worth getting out on the streets of Papillion. And you can say, well, Rosal, Ralston, La Vista, Omaha, yeah, it's everywhere, but I live in Papillion. And the people who posted live in Papillion. He can't be pulling people over left and right. I get that, it's not the police department's fault. I'll share this with you. Two years ago tonight, I lost my grandson to a red light runner. Jamin was six foot four, weighed a hundred and seventy-five pounds, and he had it when it came to sports. He had a ninety mile an hour fastball when he was seventeen. He played defensive backfield for Millard North. He intercepted at least two passes every game, he was so fast. Every college wanted this kid. He graduated in August, and he was killed in September by a guy who ran a double yellow light that tells you be prepared to stop, ran the red light. Jamin was in, on the rider's side up front. Police did their investigation and determined that this car my grandson was in was going twenty-eight miles an hour through the intersection. The guy who came up the road was doing sixty-two miles an hour. And the driver of that car with my grandson in it said the last thing he heard from Jamin was, oh. I don't want any of you losing a child or a loved one or a grandchild. Jamin and I were as close as could be. I was grandfather, he was grandson, but the whole family knew there's something about those two. I can't fix it. I'm a pastor, I'm told I'm not to hate, I should forgive. I haven't got there yet. My son who says, Dad, why did, why did God allow this? You know what, I don't have the answer to that, John. I just don't. Somebody in this city is going to lose a loved one because some idiot ran a red light. It was selfish, it was illegal, I don't know why. There's no, there's nothing in life that important that you have to run red lights. There's not. I've performed thousands, or I mean, I've performed hundreds of funerals in my lifetime, and the hardest was always when there was a child involved who got hit by a car. I don't want to do any more of those. I did one more. When my grandson was killed, Marty Cordero, general manager of the Storm Chasers, came to me and said, Dick, I think we should have Jay's funeral at the park. Like Werner Park? Really? Yeah, he, he's out here all the time. He's my kid. Tons of people said, he's my kid. He was that gregarious and outgoing, they loved the kid. I performed one last funeral in my profession as a pastor, and that was I did the service for my grandson. There were a thousand people at Werner Park. People were pulling into the lot thinking a ballgame was taking place, and they had to be told, no, it's a funeral. If you've never felt a pain, I pray that you never do, because it never goes away. And every time I see somebody run a red light, I pray, dear God, don't there, let, let that be a mother of two. Don't that be some old lady going to her doctor's appointment? I'm passionate about this, why not, right? And I don't know what y'all can do, but the public, the Papillion public wants to hear something. And y'all can talk about budgets and streets and roads and everything, but if people are getting killed on them, something needs to be done, so I, I thank you for your time. I said five, that's pretty close.
I wasn't, I wasn't counting.
At this time, we'll take up an offering? No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? Ms. Klug.
I'm going to switch positions for a minute. My name is Luann Klug, and I am the Titan Marching Invitational Manager. And that means that on this Saturday, the twenty-third, up at Foundation Field, there's going to be a marching competition that is hosting seventeen bands coming into town. It's going to bring about a thousand seven hundred students in plus their parents as spectators. So it's a big event, and before it even happens, I want to thank the Papillion Police and the Fire Department and the EMS, because I am sure that we will have them stopping in and checking on us like they have for the last nine years. It is greatly appreciated. And thank you to the, our other city staff that works with us to get appropriate cones to protect our youth as vehicles are driving around. Um, the city is a great partner to work with for a major event like this, and it is greatly appreciated. In addition to that, I'd like to let you all know that those seventeen bands will be on that football field from nine-thirty in the morning until probably ten P M in the evening with a small three-hour break about two to five o'clock. So if you have some free time and you want to see some of the best of the best of that Nebraska has to offer and that Iowa has to offer, please come on out and see how different a marching band is from ten years ago or twenty years ago or when I was in high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Gaines.
Well, I would just like to, um, ask on the record of the city attorney to, if she could provide clarification to the, to the rules, because if, if you look at, and this is not applicable to the quorum of a council, but if you look at, for example, sixteen, three, twelve, one, it mentions majority vote of the city council or majority vote of all their members. So in the short period of time, I haven't been able to find any state statute that authorizes, but the state statute does specify between those two. So therefore, if there is a statute that allows it, and we don't have an ordinance, then we may not technically legally have a budget because we voted on something the wrong way. We may, that, that amendment may have passed if the law states that it's a majority of the council, not a majority of the elected. But I'm just asking on the record if, if the city attorney and, or city staff or combination could just provide something in a reasonable period of time.
We'll do it. Mr. Thielen had made a prior ruling on that, so we'll pull that out, and then we'll also ask it to be validated by the new city attorney.
Yeah, and I, and Mr. Thielen's absolutely amazing, so I'm sure that he didn't. But I do think that there's, there are some ordinances that are, are old and antiquated and not updated, but I just want to make sure we're following the rules.
And I actually think there's a, uh, attorneys group at the League of Municipalities. So municipal attorneys around the state actually are getting together to get some clarifications of that as well for, um, case legislature needs to update anything. They were working on that last session, so we'll, we'll, we'll do that, we'll get that research for you. Any other council comments? Last couple of weeks, um, had a couple of ribbon cuttings, all seasons family medical. Last couple of weeks, had a couple of ribbon cuttings, all seasons family medical. There was a senior living facility today at a hundred and twenty-six and three-seventy. A nice one about that is they've got, in addition to their market rate product, they've also got some income-based product, and so we'll have a senior living facility, which there's a high demand for that in Papillion. And it's a combination of a little bit of multifamily and duplexes, so it looks like a neighborhood. So there'll be some income-based in there, so that'll be a good thing. The Sarpy Leadership Group took their bus tour of Papillion, and Sheltering Tree had their annual gala. They should be opening, getting their certificate of occupancy, I think, in, within the month. That's that project south of Shadow Lake for the individuals with developmental, developmental disabilities, living on their own in their own apartments, and so it's a great project. Over the weekend, the Nation of Patriots returned. That's a reminder, that's the one where the U. S. Flag was flown over the U. S. Capitol. It was brought to Papillion, and then it went out on a hundred-and-fifteen-day motorcycle tour of all fifty states. That returned on Saturday. The governor and Congressman Bacon were here for that as well. As already mentioned, the Immigration Service, that's become a nice annual tradition on Constitution Day. The Historical Society holds a formal swearing-in ceremony for individuals becoming U. S. Citizens. And then we had a United Cities meeting. Nothing major came out of that, but again, it's always a nice reminder. If there are things legislatively that you are interested in, now is a good reminder then when we can do that. And then last is, we got word late last week from the Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation that they did raise the last of their dollars to begin that project, so you'll probably begin seeing work out there, I'm gonna guess, in the next ten to fourteen days. Their goal is still to be done by March twenty-ninth, which is Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day, but they've been delayed a little bit with the last bit of funding, and then, of course, winter, if that gives them any problems. So it may go into May, but they're gonna try as hard as they can to hit March twenty-ninth. I, I think Ms. Hutter has one more comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify. You want, Councilman Gaines, you want to, you want clarity on sixteen-three-twelve? I get, I get that you want clarity on the entirety of it, but the statute that you referenced specifically was sixteen-three-twelve?
I, I'm not concerned necessarily with sixteen-three-twelve, although if you jot that down, just for research, for your own purposes, because that came into play here a few months ago. But I'm, I'm just referencing, I couldn't find anything in a very short period of time on a city of a first-class, the, the quorum requirements, but I will tell you that sixteen-three-twelve refers to the majority of council members and the majority of the council members that are elected. So that would mean that some things pass by majority, like tonight, for example, four-three should be a passing vote on something like an amendment, whereas there are some things that require the majority of the elected council. So I, I don't know what rules that we are following, and I know that you're new, so I don't, I, and I, I do trust Mr. Thielen, but a lot of the times with our city ordinances, if you look through them, there's, there, some of them are antiquated, and then some of them are not updated, just because there's so many of them. But my specific question is, is tonight on this amendment, what does the state statute require us to do? And then do we have a city code that instructs us that that's what we do? Because we can't just make up the rules as we go. And I know you know that, but...
And I can, I can certainly put something together. I will, just in, in case you want to look into it, sixteen-four-oh-four, that state statute, that the sixteen-three-twelve is specific to the mayor's powers and duties.
Correct.
Sixteen-four-oh-four is a slightly broader statute dealing with city council. It talks about ordinances and resolutions or orders for appropriation or payment of money.
I do want to be careful that we're getting outside of a published agenda item. We'll take it away for research.
And we can talk about this once you get your information.
Yeah.
Or you can send me, because I just wanted to put it on the record that when, when, as a council member, when somebody asks a question, or the mayor asks a question of how we do it, and we're not quite certain, I think that we all just owe the public that elects us, you know, we owe them an explanation that we did it the right way.
Yeah.
And that's all I'm asking for.
And if the public wonders if we are confused, we did have a confusing point a number of times ago, and we did get a legal opinion from Mr. Thielen, and that, the way we handled it tonight was in compliance with that, but we will re-clarify it. Any other council comments? If not, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.